Meeting to order at 6:30 PM. According to chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, signed by Governor Baker on June 16th, 2021, the spending term provisions to the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, this meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted with some remote participation. While in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, and a quorum of the school committee will be in person, this meeting is concurrently being presented through a Google Meet and/or by a live broadcast by NOR Cam for all the public and any school committee members who cannot attend to participate. I'll also state for the record that Mr. McGowan is on the Google Meet. The other four members are in person, along with Dr. Daley and Assistant Superintendent Mr. Connolly. Begin with public input, and just to kind of remind, as we did last time, the public comment at the beginning is really for things that are not on the agenda. And I will be clear, there is no vote tonight about any actions, no vote about what happened after October 1st, there's no re-vote on anything else. If you do have comments, you know, you can make them now, or if there's specific questions or other things about, you know, the reopening update that Dr. Daley is going to give, we'll of course hear your comments and thoughts at that time as well. So with that being said, are there any public comments that people would like to make? Mr. Simone, if you can. We're going to try to limit you to three minutes, and...
No, not three minutes. I'm tired of myself because I just want to be a jerk.
And for the record, say your name and address.
My name is Lena Simone, and I'm at Seven Deerfield Place. I'm going to pull this a little bit closer there. You all might be quite surprised to hear what I'm asking our district to do regarding masking after October 1st. I'm asking now because of concerns of mental health of our kids. By now, everyone already knows that DESI is requiring masks for all until October 1st. After October 1st, DESI reports only let the vaccinated students in any given school remove their masks if the school reaches that 80% vaccination rate. First, we know from the CDC directly that vaccinated individuals can and do transmit this virus just as much as the unvaccinated, in addition, they've been found to carry the same amount of viral load. If we believe that masks actually have the ability to stop the virus, why on earth would we only require the unvaccinated to wear them when we know very well that the vaccinated also spread the virus? Again, I cite a recent Toronto town outbreak, 74% of the almost 400 patients were fully vaccinated, Israel is another example of those. Masking only if it's unvaccinated lies completely in the face of any logic concerning why we are told to wear masks. If the vaccinated are able to transmit a virus, and the goal is to stop any potential transmission of said virus, then the vaccinated should be required to wear masks as well. If my wearing a mask is to protect you, wouldn't it also stand to reason that the vaccinated students should also be the ones wearing masks to protect those that aren't vaccinated? Either way, it really doesn't matter, but it's extremely counterproductive to only mask unvaccinated students. I think it's quite clear that the commissioner may have been required to DESI to put pressure on and coerce students to get vaccinated. Main reason I'm speaking out now, though, is because I am greatly concerned about the mental and emotional health of the unvaccinated kids. Can you imagine the bullying and ostracizing they will currently face once their peers realize that they are the only thing demanding between them being able to remove their masks? If a school does indeed reach the 80% rate, that relatively small number of unvaccinated students will stick out like sore thumbs. They will be effectively forced to wear their private medical information on their faces like a scarlet letter for all to see. Private medical information is supposed to be just that, private. What about the students who actually are vaccinated, if they choose to continue to wear masks? They will also be at risk of being bullied, ostracized, and marginalized, as students may incorrectly assume they are unvaccinated. The way is categorically wrong, and quite frankly, completely unfunctional. Would it be okay for me to insist that all of you on the school committee tell me whether or not they are vaccinated? Of course not, if this is exactly what the policy does to our children. Parents make the decisions for their kids in terms of whether or not to have them get this particular vaccine. Why would we punish the children for something they likely have no say in? Last thing I will say is if our district chooses to move forward with having solely unvaccinated students wear masks, I never again want to hear about students' quote, "social and emotional well-being." It will be clear to me and to hundreds of other parents that the district simply does not care. I can promise you that we will not sit back and let our children be bullied, ostracized, and marginalized. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simone. Anybody else have any comments, public comments? Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Julia Simone, and I'm at Seven Deerfield Place, who is currently suffering at West End High School. And this is what she wrote, and this is great from Jessica. She said, "I really never see a means like this, but I wanted to say something." She hasn't yet got the vaccine, and she said, "Sometimes it can be a kind of wearing mask is now understandable." Obviously, kids don't want to wear masks, but they will do if it's the real progress during that, if the school reaches 80% vaccination rate that owns the vaccine, then owns the vaccinated kids, which is beyond their bounds. This to me seems like discrimination. A lot of students in high school have anxiety and depression and other mental health issues, Jessica being one of them. And just the thought of things about looking at this than anyone else because she's not actually a major contributor. So showing up to schools far enough for our kids, but I know all that are so much worse. And she also said, "I think by now, people have already heard from me, my sister, that I go to the brain condition that brings her to leave." Even or not, and as disgusting as it is, some kids actually bully Jessica out of her public life. She's very worried that if kids out there are going to come home with a brain condition, what will happen when she's all that wants right now? She's obviously worried about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Anybody on the Google Meet can raise their hand? Okay, seeing none. There's no student report tonight? Are we going to have student report the next meeting, Dr. Daley, or is that going to be a little bit later?
It will probably be a little bit later. They have to come back, get voted in.
Okay, thank you. No continued business, so new business. We turn it over to Dr. Daley and Mr. Connolly to give us an update on reopening for the fall 2021.
Want to take a moment? Sure. Just a slight update, just highlighted in yellow from what we shared last time. The plans have changed a little bit, just the timeline, as we're all aware. On August 25th, DESI put a mandate into place requiring masks, which did change our guidance, just to be clear. We were always following the DESI and the Department of Health guidance, and their guidance changed, and we shifted with that change. So asking of all students and staff to release October 1st, 2021. They are not clear on what those thresholds or metrics are going to be. We do have a call coming up tomorrow with the commissioner, so we'll see if there's more information provided. They have indicated that it may be tied somewhat to a school's vaccination rate. I don't know what that means for, for example, combined campus like the middle high school. I'm not sure what that means in terms of metrics or what those metrics are, whether it's individuals, whether it's town numbers, not sure on that. And as was alluded to, fair and public comment, there's still, you know, time to discuss what any of this looks like. None of this is beneficially decided, but it was, press release, it was shared that there are some metrics that they will review on October 1st. They said that they will share much more as that year approaches. So no changes here. There was some clarification in the guidance around chorus band extracurriculars. They can still, you know, for music chorus band, they can still meet indoors, students do not. They can wear masks, and they said if feasible, they can wear masks with slits in them or the belt covers, things that we used last year, and they could also still be outdoors. It's obviously safest in every way to be outdoors, but we know that that's quite a hassle. So our music chorus band teachers have done a fantastic job over the past year making this work, and I know they'll continue to do so. Obviously, changes here that everyone will be wearing a mask because of the mandate. And we did, you know, we listened last week, and some of the suggestions that came through about having a daily health screener for everyone, and so we did make that adjustment. So everyone is being asked to complete the daily health screener this time to gather that information. And those are things that we'll continually revisit as time goes on, but for now, to start the year, we think it makes sense, given the number of breakthrough cases that we've seen as well, that we want to make sure that we're seeing, you know, information from everyone, that our nurses have that to process. This is some of the most recent data from, for North Reading, and this is part of what, you know, was shared at the Board of Health, which I was presenting at the other night. So you can see that we're slightly, you know, very close, slightly ahead of the Commonwealth in terms of the positivity rate, and in terms of the daily average positivity rate. North Reading has a slightly higher number in the two-week percent positivity, and the daily average rate is a little bit higher. So that's not the greatest information. Certainly, I think our Board of Health may have weighed in on some of the decisions had DESI not stepped in, but I do think that, as we always said, the state would review this data, and we would follow what they have suggested. The vaccination data, it's slowly increasing. Students that are aged 12 to 15, or children aged 12 to 15, we've seen some slight increases over the last three weeks. So we're at 67% students with one dose. Individuals fully vaccinated is increasing to 59%. Rates of 16 to 19, we're at 79% with one dose, and 75% with both doses. So if that 80% rate were to hold, for whatever decisions we would make based on the 80%, we're very close to the 80% for 16 to 19-year-olds, and increasing at 12 to 15 rate. I believe those are the only updates that I had to the presentation. I have some of the other slides here as well on the testing, but we are just progressing, moving ahead with the testing, and we have taken all the steps to have three different types of testing in, the schools ready for the fall. Like, I don't know if you have any COVID-related? Nothing COVID-related, but just operationally, I would get to that point. Sure. We're like, sponsoring, so forth. Especially at Howard, if you want to break...
Do we want to see if there's any questions on this first?
Sure.
So start with committee members. Anybody have any specific questions or concerns on this? Mr. McGowan, you're raising your hand. I'll let you go.
Thank you. Mr. Buckley, Dr. Daley, in the guidance released by DESI, I guess it was last week or 10 days ago, they mentioned masking exceptions for those students who have emotional or developmental needs. I'm curious as to how that process is working, how you are arranging that process to work, and whether that's been taken place yet, or if it's still to be, you know, still to be processed.
Sure. That's something that we handled last year. I think we advocated for it, North Reading. I know I certainly did a lot. We started seeing that a lot in their guidance, that exception. And our process last year was we had it go through our Student Services Office, and it's continuing that way this year. Right now, the request can be made, what I suggested is to go through the principals, and then the principal is put in touch with the Student Service Office to make sure those accommodations are met. So from everything I've heard, that is how it's flowing and functioning, and it's working well. It worked without a hitch last year, so continue to do that.
Any other comments, question?
With the committee meeting last time, we said we followed DESI, I agree with, unfortunately, we've always followed DESI. I think that's worked out well for us. I think we're masking now because DESI put out a mandate, not because what we approved last week was us proving to always blindly follow DESI. I just wanted to kind of make that clarification, because I didn't interpret it as, you know, we are just always following DESI, and that's why we're wearing masks, we're wearing masks. Now, that's how I interpreted it. So then I'm hoping with that, if we're in agreement on that, that when we do come in more and more about the percentages and, you know, the vaccination requirement, if it ends up absolutely being that, that we bring that back and talk about it.
Sure. Let me just clarify what I was saying, because I'm responding more to the time, I was, I think I said that when the timeline was up?
Yeah.
I've received a few emails from folks saying that, you know, we made a decision, and then DESI came in and did the right thing and overruled us, and that's not what happened. We were following their guidance. The recommendation was to follow their guidance, and we were on the same page. They increased their guidance, and we likewise increased. But we have, just to your point, last year even, DESI was saying we would maintain three foot of distancing, and we said, no, we were going for the same. So I mean, we've certainly not followed to the letter, and we do have that, obviously that information. So I stand corrected if that came off that way. I was speaking more to the timeline, really, of order of events. So thank you for the time.
And then I just had a question. Do you think it will probably be our next meeting where we'll start to talk about that? Do you think it's going to be closer to the October 1st, or, you know, what do you think that's going to look like, where you're going to have pretty solid...
Sure. Yeah, so I, like I mentioned, I have a call tomorrow. I'm not sure what's going to be shared there. There were a few other items that were included, one being about remote learning for students who are positive, and possibly, so that could be something they're going to discuss, they could share more about the metrics. You know, the way things have been coming down, and there's so much changing so rapidly based on data, you know, I'm not sure what will be there tomorrow, won't be out soon. So we will continuously be discussing this at all of our meetings. We have a meeting on the 13th, we have a meeting after that.
The 25th.
Yeah, so certainly at the 25th, we'll be discussing. But I wouldn't make, I don't, I honestly think we would not be in a position to make decisions or need to go against guidance. I bet you we won't see that guidance from that until that, at the earliest, probably that meeting on the 25th. I don't think there's going to be clarity in metrics around the October numbers, because I think they're going to wait until the very latest data comes out before they make the decision to extend. So they, I'm reading this certainly as a, you know, October 1st at the earliest, you know, so they might say, hey, the numbers aren't looking great, we're going to go a different direction and extend this. So we're, I don't think we're going to have to go against the grain in any way before that comes available. So certainly, we'll talk by the 13th, probably more likely the 25th.
And only like whether or not they extend it, it's not, they're not debating this, like to some of the public comments, that's like, you know, unvaccinated versus vaccinated, you know, topic environment that they're kind of creating there.
Yeah, I think that certainly could go for debate. Based on what I, I watched the Board of Elementary Secondary Education meeting, and some of those concerns were raised by members of the board as well. So I think that there's a possibility there could be changes revision. I really, I'm a little bit above my knowledge there, but I think based on that, I could see some revisions. We've certainly seen revisions like that over time to guidance. So I don't know that anything that was in there is exactly how it's going to come out. And sometimes it's verbiage, sometimes it's a, you know, they could come back and say, "We strongly recommend that the vaccinated come in." You know, so it, I think all of that could change.
Okay. Thank you.
Papa Vassilio, I see your hand raised.
Well, just all the way over here. So just, just to kind of that, that point, and really, if DESI's got a track record, it's just like the best students, they do it all at the last minute, often stand at the end. So I'm wondering, looking at the calendar, we have that meeting scheduled for September 27th, and that's really close to October 1st, but we've talked in the past about Monday and Thursday meeting, and in that chance that, you know, if they extended and say, "This is a mandate, we have nothing to really talk about, we're just going to say, okay, that's the mandate." But if they say, "Now we want schools to decide for themselves again," it might, maybe that's a, maybe we talk about moving the meeting to that Thursday, that the last day of September to be in the best possible position for a last-minute, like, information dump, and we can decide for ourselves, if that ends up being necessary.
I made this idea. I would just say, I think, I think our meeting schedule can always be changed, and we should try to, unless it's an emergency, we should try to always give at least two days' level of notice, that's really what the requirement is. So if we need to have additional meetings too, that's the other thing, where if we already have things scheduled on the 25th, for example, we could decide on the 25th to have another meeting four days later and figure it out. So, yeah, I mean, I think it's always open to change if we need to. I agree.
Yeah, I, I do see that point. I also think there's some help on our side if we do have to make a change or give communication out to have a little bit of time too. So I, very often, I don't send the updates and reminders based on a school meeting until the next day.
Yeah.
And then people might not even get to read that until they're home from work later that day. So I think, I think even a hybrid of those ideas possibly, where we might feel there's a need for an additional meeting, we can have one, or we can even just have a virtual meeting at this stage too. We can have a emergency virtual.
And, and, I mean, I think the point here is, DESE is the body that is looking at all the state, looking at numbers and making decisions and mandates based on that. That's what we said at the last meeting, that's what they did this time, and it did, when it came out, it says at least October 1st. That means it could very well be kicked back later, and again, I have no idea what DESE's going to do, nobody does, but I suspect that if numbers go up a little bit when school goes back into session, it will get kicked back personally. I think that's just going to happen, then you're going to run into Thanksgiving holiday, you're going to run into Christmas, and I don't know where it goes, but we'll have to just evaluate as we, as we do. So, Mr. McGowan, I saw your hand one more time. Did you have a question, or did...
Well, I just, I just, to clarify, because both dates are floating around, our, our meeting is scheduled for the 27th, which is a Monday.
Yeah, the 25th is a Saturday.
Right there, Monday is the 25th.
So that might be the type of...
The typo's on the meeting thing, it's the 27th.
Correct on that, correct.
Okay.
I think this carried over from two...
I just looked at the end of the thing.
Yeah, I was just looking at my...
The 27th is the Monday.
Thank you.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Any questions to the public? Mrs. Clooney?
Hi, so two things.
Please state your name and address.
Oh, sorry, my name is Tony Clooney, and I live at 365 Park Street. So I have two questions. I looked at the agenda for this meeting on the website, and I couldn't find it, like, the last one was from the live. So if we're going to potentially be adding something like this to the agenda, is there a better place to go look for the agenda?
Sure. Agendas are posted on the Town Clerk's website, 48 hours in advance, they're posted live at Town Hall, and these are also posted on our website. So there's a, there's a place to click with the agenda. This, this one might not have been posted on that, it was, it was an error on my part to not get it up there. But I've typically been posting the videos, like, the day after, which is much faster than it's ever been turned around in the past. So I put the video up the next day, and I put the agenda up before the meeting. That didn't happen for this meeting, but the Town Clerk's website is the place to go. That's where, that's the legal process, it's posted at Town Hall, and it's posted on the Town Clerk's website. The minute, the minute since July, when you say since July, you're probably talking about the minutes. Those don't get posted until a few meetings later.
I may even look at the... Like, I don't want to, that's why I asked the question, because I'm fully willing to admit that, but it's the second meeting in July is the last one I saw meeting minutes for on the school committee website now.
The minute, the minutes get through as...
Not the agenda. I didn't see the agenda either. So, and, and again, it could be operator error, and fully...
They're hyperlinked, they're hyperlinked.
Yeah, so I...
And Miss Clooney, just to kind of comment, if you go, if you just search "North Reading Town Clerk," on the left-hand side, there's public meeting calendar.
Okay.
But that was, but that's always the legal one that's posted legally, so that will always have the most up-to-date agenda.
Okay, perfect, just so that if...
I kind of put it in a couple of places, so we may have missed, we may have missed, I know I missed this one, because I just, I didn't even get the agenda out until this morning.
No judgment, I just wanted to make sure these things are going to be my targets, but do you get, I mean, obviously, I don't know if yours gets the schedule of meetings with DESI, so I, you know, just so that people know when it may come up, I guess. My second question is, when it comes to the DESI, I know that you said something about they recommended three, but we did six. Do we have the option to do less than the DESI, like, recommendations, or is it just to do, take additional precautions that we have the right to do?
I think, I think that would depend on specific requirements. There's certain things that are required...
And it's a mandate, where, like, so if they mandate that you have to wear masks until 80% or whatever, that, that's a mandate, so that's not a, no, I guess, I'm just curious what the rules are in terms of when DESI, DESI makes these, issues these guidance, how much leniency we have.
If they say it's required to do something, we don't have a lot of leasings.
Okay.
If they say it's recommended, or this is guidance, or guidelines, it's a little bit different.
Okay.
Certainly easier to go above and below.
I'll add a couple of other quick comments, too. Number one, back to the date again, very end of the meeting, we always say what the next meeting is, so if you just look at it, if you go back, like, we'll read, that's where I was reading from the wrong date last time, we'll always say it's the very end of the meeting when the next meeting is. On the mandate, I would also point out, the sixth seat last year was also something that was, we were bargaining with the unions about as well, to be very honest with you, because we were, that was something that came up as part of our bargaining with the union, where the committee was mostly talking about the DESE guidance, but when we got into some of the negotiations with the unions, that's where a lot of the sixth seat came up. So there was some other things going on last year for that. And I'll just share with the public, because I know there's been questions about, you know, mandates and things like that. I'm on the Mass Association of School Committees' list serve, and there was discussion going on about what happens if you don't follow a mandate. And one of the, one of the directors there said very clearly, last spring, there were some schools that were talking about not coming back in full person when they were mandated to do that. They were told very clearly that they could lose state and federal funding if they do not follow the DESE mandate. So that was sent out to all the Mass Association of School Committees, saying that if you do not follow the mandate, that you could lose state and federal funding.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Ms. Simone?
I just have a quick comment. I know that you may have more discussions, as you mentioned, on the 13th, and more likely than not, the 27th. I feel like we're talking a little bit about what's in our interest here, meaning, you know, the mandate is the mandate, obviously. We have to do what the mandate says, and that's okay, but, you know, you're talking about, instead of perhaps making a decision via the school committee, Dr. Daley, I really don't know who it would be, honestly, but having those kids that are unvaccinated, for whatever reason, now they have a nice month of stress that they have to worry about, and across of whatever other anxiety and depression they may have, oh my God, what's going to happen? We're so close to that, that number, we probably won't make it, the 80% vaccinated, and now they have to have all of this stress of, oh my goodness, what, October 1st is going to happen, everyone else is going to be listed as far as the mask mandate except for us. So that's, that's why I'm just asking, I don't know if that's something that could be put on earlier, if it's something we could discuss. I'm a bit ignorant about it, quite honestly, so I do think it's an important thing now.
Yeah, I would not recommend, I mean, we still haven't even had a fall of politics yet.
Yeah.
I would not recommend making any decisions about something we have no information.
Yeah, I mean, and, and my thoughts would, to answer the specific question, could we say there's going to be a mandate for the, for masks for the entire year for everybody? We could. But that's not what we talked about last time, and last year, everybody wanted to know, when are the masks coming up? Everybody, at every meeting, people ask, "When is this changing? When is this changing?" We always had to wait to get those updated guidance, to see what's happening. We have no idea what's going to happen with the numbers in the next month. Dr. Daley just showed that the numbers have gone up since the last meeting. These are things that have to be determined. Personally, I think, I, I don't like making public health decisions. I don't think school committee members should be doing that generally. I think DESE should be doing that, I think the local Board of Health should do that. Before our last meeting, I went to the local Board of Health meeting, I listened in, Board of Health said very clearly, it's their authority to make public health decisions. If the school committee made a, made a decision that was different than that, Board of Health has the authority to make that decision. So there's so much going on right now, and I don't think having theoretical discussions before we even get back to school is really the most beneficial. I mean, if we see numbers go up, and it gets kicked back another three months, you know, I, I mean, I just don't think we need to have that yet, that's my personal opinion. Doesn't mean that we couldn't do that, but that's where I stand. I think we wait to see what happens, you know, in numbers, and go from there.
Okay. One more comment. So to me, as a parent of a child that is unvaccinated, you know, it's, the way it looks to me is that there is no care or concern for those kids. So just a comment, you don't need to answer anything.
I can, just so I can, if I can just clarify what I said last meeting, I would say, it still holds, is that I, I'm not looking at you, I would not recommend anything that identifies kids' personal medical information, what you said earlier. I think the part, that was part of the reason why we were suggesting what we were suggesting previously, which we thought worked, which was, everyone can wear a mask, so that's not identifying one or the other. And so I, first of all, I still think that will continue. People, I don't know that everyone will stop the second that happens, even if this were to be, to go through. Number two, you know, no matter what DESI says, my recommendation would continue to Number two, you know, no matter what DEFC says, my recommendation would continue to be, we should not be doing anything to highlight anything that could be personally identifiable, medical information. I think that's a dangerous slippery slope. And so I, I heard that, as I said, I heard that from at least two members of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education also. And that makes us, me, and so my recommendations would be to continue that. But I just, I still think that there's so much more to come from them. Like, I don't want to respond to what they might do. I want to see more about what they're actually saying.
And, and yeah, and I'll, I'll just say, um, I, I, I feel, I have strong feelings in, really, in terms of what you're saying should be a conversation that we have and, and talk about. The only reason I don't think we should have that conversation right now is just that my understanding of, of DEFC's rule is that the 80% rate, the no mask, that that doesn't happen until at the earliest after October 1st. It's not like if we are 80% tomorrow, then what you're fearing is going to be something that happens. Because it's, as, you know, unless they change their minds, or I'm misreading it, that's not the case. So I think we should have that, if nothing changes, if DEFC doesn't change their guidance or change anything, then we should absolutely have that conversation before October 1st. But closer to it, they might, they might change their minds, there's, there's too many things that we don't know about yet.
Chris, it's the pressure to reach the 80% vaccine right now.
I mean, I, I...
That's the difference.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I, I don't feel, I don't, I don't feel good about using peer pressure in this way, in this setting.
Especially for children.
Right, but, um, yeah, I mean, so that's, yeah. I mean, I guess that is a, a, a fair reason to talk about it earlier, but realistically, it's, you know, if not now, our next meeting is when we're going to be talking about these things anyway.
I think there could be more, there could be more than we have to get out of these also.
I, I take, Mr. McGowan?
Uh, yeah, thanks. Um, one way we can avoid, um, uh, one, one way, I think we should consider, or, or maybe we could talk about, is regardless of what, if, if DEFC makes a, what, sort of a last-minute declaration as we approach the 31st, um, then we can, um, can we maybe say now that we won't make a change until the, the school committee meets, uh, the, the, the very next scheduled meeting? So, in other words, so people don't expect that if the, uh, the, the guidance changes, then that means instantly the next day, uh, that, that our, our, our masking mandate or has, has changed, uh, for the school. Does that make any sense? I, I just want to...
You can extend it, if, if, if we wanted to, we could extend it beyond. Even if, even if, even if DEFC takes it away, we could extend it, correct?
Right, and, and I'm just saying, if they, if, if, if they come out with some last-minute up, uh, you know, where there's, where it seems like we, we have the ability to remove the mandate, but we've already passed a meeting or we haven't had a good discussion about it, I think we should wait until we can have a meeting and discuss it, even if it's later than that, whatever that, you know, October 1st or, or, or whatever the deadline is, uh, before we make a change.
Okay. Ma'am? Can you speak up just a little bit, because the speakers, they already came up here.
Jane Margeon, 11 Hillside Road. Um, just taking a little bit of clarification first off, the October 1st date, um, in, in reference to the mask mandate, the numbers that you keep talking about, did specifically is vaccination rates or are we including positives and all of that in the mix, or?
I mean, Dr. Daley has said that we don't really know exactly what it is. What was released in the press release just said 80% vaccinated.
Right, I, I did see that, thank you. Yeah, I did see that. And so, again, from my concern is that, um, similar to latest among us is that, I know there are going to be students, ultimately, who are not going to want to vaccinate. And for a variety of reasons, I understand that people on the board here, I don't feel qualified to make these kinds of decisions. But, um, you know, as a nurse myself, I find it very concerning that, um, we are all having young medical rights being taken away from us and being given, um, just specific rules. And it all seems focused on the need to vaccinate. If, if Providence Town hasn't shown us anything, it has shown us that these vaccines do not prevent infection of friends. If the data shows anything, it shows that very young children are probably buffed. They do not get impacted significantly, but there may always be, working in health, there's always an outlier, there's always somebody, we get a common call, decide. I understand those anecdotal situations are tragic. But the data indicates that young children are not significantly impacted, that young children are not spreading this virus. And Sweden and other places where children haven't been forced to wash their own mask.
Ma'am, ma'am, I just want to interrupt you for a second here. This is not on the agenda, we're asking about the opening. We've said we're not, we're not discussing the mandate yet, we're not doing that. We, we'll take specific questions on the, on the reopening right now. But we have other things we need to get to as well. We will have a discussion about it at some point in time. And I hear the question, I'm, can we have it now or not? And we're waiting.
I think we're pushing people away, this is very control, this is very controlling behind this maintainment. But I would accept that this, that any, to me, any suggestion of removing masks from vaccinated students and keeping them on the unvaccinated is nothing more than a determination, even if that's...
Okay, other questions about the reopening?
I could just, I can share what I put on the screen. So that's, that's the information we have at this time. They have made a connection between vaccination rates and, and now. I think we've heard about that, I think we, we talked about that. It does say that they're going to provide additional information about what, what, what that would look like and how to demonstrate, when we have all that information, I think that's when we can come back and discuss all the above. But, yeah.
Patrick, for all of the parents out there...
Yeah.
That are non-vaccinated about the environment that their kids are walking into, if they're unvaccinated, can you just say a few words to make them feel more comfortable, including myself, that says like they're not going to be feeling this pressure from teachers and administrators all the time? Like, kids will be kids, but is there going to be that pressure that they're going to feel in school because we have, we're trying our star to produce the 80%?
Pressure to be vaccinated?
Pressure from teachers to be vaccinated, you know, a lot of what was, you know, like, trying to promote it to the kids, trying to push it on the kids, trying to, you know, gift cards to the kids if they can, you know, and then they're coming home to their parents and they're causing, you know, challenges and the whole. Is there, can you say anything to alleviate some of those concerns of that type of pressure? Tactics are not going to happen to them?
Sure, I, I, I don't think it's the place of the staff to be promoting personal medical choices for children. Uh, we have continued to promote in the town about vaccinations. The governor's continuing to do that, it's coming from everywhere to encourage people to vaccinate. The Department of Health did offer gift cards for our latest, uh, round of vaccinations as an additional incentive to get more people to come. And that was also for, um, to try to get other people in the community to come, to get our numbers up higher to where they should be. But our, it's not the role of the teachers, and the teachers are not going to be doing that. There's a mask mandate, they're going to make sure that students have masks on. I wasn't sure if that's what you're asking about as well, but...
I also want to make sure they learn.
Yeah, there's not a...
Just to make parents feel that, right? Kids will do what kids do, but, you know, just not promote that type of behavior and then kids kind of kind of along with that, like, of course, it will give parents some peace of mind, I think.
Yeah, I, I mean, we could try to communicate that a little bit more. I didn't realize that was really a concern, because, and I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, but that, you know, the, currently, the biggest concern of the unvaccinated was that they would be wearing a mask and, you know, that the younger children weren't able to even have an opportunity to be vaccinated. I think this concern is more about people that might choose not to or can't, for whatever reason, get vaccinated and they don't want to be made, drawn attention to. And it's sort of about, I'm sensing more of a, uh, you know, a dis, you know, a discomfort with this, what's up on the board here, right? This connection between vaccination rates and this. Uh, I can say that, you know, the schools are not in a place where we're going to be trying to push an agenda or push this forward. I, I can't say where it's going to go in the state, I just don't know. There might be, um, there might be, you know, other things that we're going to need to discuss. So, yeah, I can, I can certainly try to help communicate that a little bit more to folks as well. But I, I, that is not something I really, I, I have heard it from a few, but I haven't heard it from, from any that I can help to communicate that. Mr. Buckland, could I just, for one moment, to clarify something I said to you? So on that, um, just to be clear, on, on the website, so the, the town, this is the question from earlier. Uh, I misspoke, I have not posted the agenda. That's something I can do, this is something that I started to do as a new superintendent when we went virtual. And I actually cleaned it up this year to make it easier, so school committee meeting dates, links and reporting. And so what I always put here, it's just a really easy way to find a link. And then I post the video, I, I haven't done this one yet, and I haven't posted, I didn't get to this one. But I've been very good about doing it, actually, these two are the ones I just haven't got to yet. But I, I, I haven't been in the habit of posting the agendas here, but I can start to do them. So that's something I can do. But again, that's in addition. I would always say, the official agenda, if you need it, is always on the Town Clerk's website. That's where that goes. So, but what I've been doing here, like I said, is the links to join these meetings virtually and then the reporting of those meetings when they get up. And so that's, and what I have done is I've sent out videos to, to the community about how to use the website. The meetings are also on the school calendar. And you can go any, you can click and get right into the meetings by clicking here. So there's multiple ways to get to these virtual meetings. And that's what I was trying to communicate. But I can, um, I, I appreciate the suggestion, I can try to put the agendas up here as well before they get, um, you know, around the same time, instead of...
Margeon?
I'm here, um, Jane Margeon, 11 Hillside Road again, sorry. One thing I could suggest, and it's what's happened at, um, colleges, is, um, perhaps a notification from superintendent or someone reminding people that people's personal medical history is private and they are not supposed to be asking each other just because of COVID-19, that hasn't been suspended. School nurse may have a record of school kids and isn't. The students should not be invading each other's privacy medical privacy and saying, how have you been vaccinated? How have you been vaccinated? It's still very prescient to answer that. A, they may just lie, you know, but I just think a reminder that this has been timed and that, you know, you should, you know, be respectful of each other's, um, medical history. You don't know everything about everybody else and acquiring about vaccination.
But, but I also think that the big difference between what Spatwell just said and what you just requested, and Spatwell's talking about staff and employees of the district. Regulating communication between students is a very different thing. And it's a very slippery slope to try to start talking about what students are allowed to speak about and what they're not allowed to speak about.
Well, I mean, reminding people that, first of all, private medical information, private speech rights is not...
Well, a, a, and again, I mean, maybe I'm, I, I wrote a thesis on student-free speech rights and I'm a little bit concerned about if the district starts regulating what students can and can't speak about. So, but I do think, this is Spatwell's claim about staff and administrators is very different than trying to regulate student speech.
I can tell you that you may be open to the liability, if children are being harassed about having to be open to vaccination. And do you want to test that? And I'm going to go.
And, and I'm a lawyer, I'm okay with it. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I don't think anyone's going to be harassed. I also think, I did send a reminder out last year when we got some questions from parents about presentations on this topic, and I reminded everyone, so I can send that out. It'll certainly be something we'll talk about in opening day as well, as I'm sure as well.
Okay, any other thoughts? Okay, uh, Mr. Connell, you have other updates for...
Yeah, I just wanted to give some brief operational updates. Um, this Thursday edition of the North Reading Transcript will include, uh, some information about the, the busing for our school, as well as the food service, um, program. Um, the bus routes are finalized, they are posted on the North Reading District's website under Bus Transportation. And, um, you know, we do, we are running 12, 12 routes. I did meet with, and I think we had a really good meeting with North Suburban Transportation, um, our new provider and, and the 12 drivers. And we went over a lot of the, the safety protocols and just the expectations of North Reading as a district. And, um, I was definitely encouraged by, uh, that meeting. We do have a lot of the same drivers, not all, but a lot of the same drivers that have been comfortable driving in North Reading over the last, um, five years. And, um, what will also be published is some information and frequently asked questions about, um, busing and how things work, which will also be in the North Reading Transcript. All that information is also on our website for families to, to access. Um, and I do plan to, later this week, um, send out sort of reminder to all of the bus pass holders, just about the, the operation and, um, our requests of just the seating and, and the fact that kindergarten, freshman grade should sit at the front and the, and the older children on each, on runs, elementary and secondary should go towards the, the back of the bus. Um, the drivers are well aware of that, and we went over, um, kind of those protocols and so forth. So I think they'll be there to assist us. Um, I will say, certainly at the secondary level, the buses are, are certainly very full, there's not a lot of space. Most, I think I would say half of the routes are at capacity, um, which is new, but we anticipated that would be the case. Uh, but we have worked very, very hard to accommodate all of the, um, families that kind of came forward over the last couple of weeks to accommodate, um, and find them a, a seat on, on the bus and really minimize that waitlist, which is really down to only, you know, two or, two or three families at this point. And we're, we're working hard to accommodate, um, all families that need a bus pass, or that desire a bus pass. So, you know, we'll certainly, as we always do, and there's information, um, in the article that will speak to this, you know, we'll be monitoring the timeliness of the runs. Over the first week, we'll be, um, recording and logging, um, the, the bus routes at each school, uh, for each run. And as always is the case, we'll have to make some tweaks and some changes. Uh, hopefully they're minimal, but we may have to make some changes, some changes to make sure, um, we get the runs to run efficient, as efficient as possible. But certainly pleased with the efforts by both the business office and Rosalind McKillip, who kind of manages this process and done, uh, exceptional job redesigning the routes and, and dealing with a lot of information that's kind of come at her, uh, this, you know, this, so far this, this summer. So, we'll, um, but parents can look for that information in the transcript and also on our website. And I will send that kind of reminder out to the bus pass holders later this week. So, uh, we'll have to just kind of wait to see what happens. Um, food service program, had a good meeting with the food service workers, um, who kind of came back for their orientation meeting last week. Happy to say we have just about all of our workers back, there's a couple of new, um, food service associates that will be joining as a team. And, um, there was some information that will also be in the transcript this, this coming Thursday edition that just reminds families that mail is free, uh, for the duration of the school year, um, for both breakfast for those children in the program and for middle school high school students. Um, there'll be breakfast available at all the schools, as well as, um, the lunch and so forth will be free. Um, we're also looking to team up with the YMCA again to provide them their snacks for the active school program, that, that was a good program that we got going last year. And that will provide some additional revenue, um, for the district as well. And, um, and there's just some general information about the free reduced lunch process and how we're still trying to collect that data. And even though the benefits will extend to everyone for, for free mail, filling out the application could also extend to some additional benefits, both from the state as well as through other, other programs that it, it normally does. So, a reminder to families to fill, um, you know, fill those forms, um, if there could be other benefits that go, go with that, you know, should they, should they desire to do so. Um, so there'll be a lot of information about both those programs. Um, I think it's, I encourage families to take a look at it. And again, this information is all on our, our website as well. The lunch menus will be posted, I think, by the end of the week, um, so families can access that to see what's available. And, uh, that information is, um, will be, is all there for families to access. So, um, the other thing that we're certainly doing is, you know, I, I provided a brief update for some of the capital projects at the beginning of the summer. So I think all those projects are just about completed at this point, which a lot of our work went into make sure these projects kind of came together. Um, a lot of work happened at the EF, a little elementary school this year. They, they, their parking lot, the main parking lot, it was paved, um, it striped recently. And I, I'm definitely pleased with how it came out, it looks, looks really, really well if you've been over there. Um, their soffits are, are all completed and I'm really impressed with the company, did an exceptional job. Um, they've also received upgrades to their, a lot of their unit ventilators and their HVAC equipment. Um, the valve and the, and the, kind of the brain of those systems was, was upgraded. It should help the dampers bring in better fresh air intake and the, the, everything should be much enhanced, which is, which is great. Um, and then certainly the technology items, smart boards at the elementary level are in, in process. We, you know, COVID-19 has delayed a lot of the shipping and the, we're, so we're, we kind of are dealing with some of those delays. We expect by mid-September, um, we'll be able to get all of the smart boards that were ordered with the large capital funds installed in the, in the appropriate classrooms. Certainly the Chromebook devices are here and, um, we're being, um, you know, delivered to families, uh, last week. Dr. Daley did a great job, you know, managing that program. Um, the multi-function vehicle box is in, um, and I've already seen several sports teams make good use of those, have access to two vehicles, um, already in, you know, a week into the sports program, which is, which is great. Um, and we are... And we are waiting delivery of the tool cat, which should happen by the end of the month. And so a lot, a lot of work went in to those large capital projects. And then from a facility perspective, both the grounds crew, the custodians crew and many of our service providers have been hard at work, you know, making the appropriate upgrades, it's, you know, filter changes, all those things that take place at all the schools. And we are definitely prepared for, to receive students in staff coming from Wednesday and next week. So it's definitely been, been a busy summer.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. I have a bunch of questions, but I'm gonna turn over.
You might know this too, but with the little school saving, I'm really excited that went through, should it help with the traffic? Or is it just, was I no traffic, were they able to like?
Yeah, I can, I can address that. So I had, I had several conversations with Principal Molly when we met with the striping company as well as Honeycomb Tignan, the director of facilities was there. So she opted to keep everything the same. She felt strongly that it should stay the same, although we left the option open to run the traffic pool a little bit different and wrap more around whole parking lot and then around, which would again get more cars in. So she felt that it wasn't a major, issue has been functioning better as of late. She felt with the preschool being after the regular dismissal, that a lot of those congestion issues have kind of resolved itself. And she felt that if we did it a little bit differently than some families that opt to kind of park and bring their child in and then get back would be kind of stuck waiting there for eight, 10 or 12 minutes. So she wants to see how this goes, but the option was left open to redirect traffic more around the majority of that parking lot. But she felt that was needed. So I kind of trusted her judgment on that. She watches it every day.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I would add a couple of things. I mean, one thing I would add is there's a lot more parking spaces. Well, what's the, what's the capacity? Do you know the number of spaces?
I don't know the exact number offhand. I know we picked up about 16, at least 16 to 20 spaces.
Because that, that was part of the problem too, where like, you know, you couldn't even park on the street. People are all the way down. They're going down south a bit further. And but having an extra 16 or 20 spaces helps, I think. I think also the, the time it was the biggest problem that I experienced was when the, when the little school was the early school, because it was all the scheduling. So two years it was, it was easier than then, than the other two years. And so I think that's a big piece of it where now that all the elementary started the same time, I think some of those traffic issues are going to be eliminated, as the municipality is saying.
Correct. Yeah, that was my question.
Other question. So I, I have a couple of questions. There are a few questions. On food service, Mr. Connolly, is there, were the lunches different last year than in previous years and what are the lunches this year going to be like? Are they more like, like old, the old days? Are they more like bag lunch type?
They were, they were different, somewhat different last year. There was a lot of pre-packaging last year. They all pre-packaged and it was more of a grab and go. So they are gonna look a little bit different this year. So there will be some pre-packaging for, for students that want to come and just kind of grab a quick, a quick, you know, salad bar or a quick sandwich and kind of go back to their, their seat. Or there will be that grab and go option, but we are able to get more, we are using, back to using more of the traditional serving line at all the schools. So that variety and that option is, will be back to be more like how it was previously. As long as no one's self-serving, so always there'll be someone that takes certified doing the survey with the sneeze guard and everything is protected. But because we're back to eating predominantly all in the cafeteria, we're able to do more of the traditional kind of hot and cold options that have been there. That's a good question.
Second question, what's the capacity at the before and after school programs?
So the before school programs, obviously just the different, the before school programs are administered by the district. And the after school programs are administered by the, through our partnership with the Burbank YMCA. Before school programs, the capacity, as of late last week, at the bachelor's school was about 25 students. At the hood school, 22 students. At the little school, I believe there was about 14 students. At the middle school, there were 10 students. So.
Were they able to meet everybody's request that wanted it?
Correct. So we had asked for a minimum of 10 and we met that. So we, there's no, we can actually accommodate more. There's no waiting list. Everyone that desired before school is able to, is in the program. The after school, I spoke to Mary Ann Hannafin, the director of the program last week. There was a very small waiting list at the bachelor's school and the hood school. I think there was maybe two students at the bachelor's and one or two at the hood. They're, they, you know, they, their licensing and their requirements are very much kind of mandated through the state. She was appealing for additional license to kind of add sections of the library at those schools to accommodate those families. So she's hopeful that's gonna be the case, but I know she's working on it for those families.
And if you can go ahead and update it. I know with the changing of the schedule, that was one concern that people had was that some elementary students were previously watched by older students and they wouldn't be held.
Right, so, so she's working on accommodating the, the small waitlist that is there currently. Again, there's staffing challenges with all these programs now and certainly with the, with some of the time changes. The schools that have done that in the area have experienced some of that. She's, you know, we're not in danger of not being able to run a program or that, but she, she, we are kind of assist her in assigning staff and putting out notices to, to our employees if they want to, you know, work within the program. So we are kind of assist them there. We've had very preliminary conversations, I think, with Mr. LaPrent to see if something can be arranged for high school students to potentially work in the after school programs and come down for that. I would say it's a very, just a beginning introduction period to something to that effect, but I would say this is quite curious and involved in those conversations right now. But yeah, certainly, we're certainly trying to work together. I know they have sort of those two programs. They have the, kind of the early pickup. They're referring it to the blast off program, which essentially bridges families to the 315 timeframe, which was similar to the, the dismissal two years ago. And then there's the traditional program, which was run until about 6:00 P.M.
Okay, two more questions. Sports attendance? I, I know my, my brother's a teacher and I just know they've had a lot of challenges getting enough students to participate in sports. Have we seen any drop offs in sports attendance? Are any concerns about having enough students run teams?
Not that I'm aware of, although we did discuss it, I thought except for me, we'll talk about later about the possibility of allowing an age period waiver.
Okay, for, for one, for one, for one. Generally speaking, have we?
I've had preliminary comments. I haven't seen the list yet. They're working on that. I usually get that early next week. But my conversations I've had with Mr. Johnson, the athletic director, is that he hasn't seen a significant decline. I think we're still around, he indicated we're over 300 students participating in the fall, which is over pretty close to 50%, which is generally where we've been.
Those, those numbers that I'm quoting are not related to COVID necessarily. It's something that we've seen for most of the years.
Yes, okay.
Audio is off on the Google Meet. It looks like the, we have, yeah, we're not hearing anything on the Google Meet.
It just came back. Thank you.
Okay. I know we lost the audio there.
It's back.
Are we back?
We're back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I think so, and Mr. Connolly was just talking about, we have building subs, two for each building, trying to hire one more for the high school.
Correct. But overall, I think, I think we're in fairly good shape between the, the building subs and our current active directory of on-call subs to, to start the year.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay. Anybody other than me have questions? Yes?
Hi, Barbara Jones, Victor Landover. I have two questions. The first one is fall sports. Are people going to be allowed to attend?
The fall sports, all spectators are allowed. Spectators are indoors, have to wear a mask. Right now, there's no size or crowd limitations beyond what the facilities would typically require.
My second question is about the busing for secondary. As a parent of a middle schooler and a high schooler, you have 11-year-olds, you have 18-year-olds on the same bus. There's not a assigned seat this year like there were last year. What is the plan to try and keep them separate? Or is it just a loose younger kids up front, older kids in the back?
So we are asking and communicating with bus holders, pass holders that the sixth graders and sit up front in the first three to four rows and then grade 11, 11 through 12 sit in the rear of the bus. But you are correct, there's no official assigned seating.
Yeah, and, and I mean, just to elaborate, we talked about this quite a bit when we were talking about the changing, you know, the change of the schedule. There were very few 11th and 12th graders that seemed to ride the bus. It was primarily, and you can correct what I'm wrong here, but it was primarily the younger high school students that, that rode the bus. And, you know, a, a lot of it was trying to accommodate, you know, high school and middle school, a lot of them didn't want to get out too late for sports and things like that. And so nothing's a perfect set. It was just.
No, I just add a little concern with the, you know, an 11-year-old and an 18-year-old. And there's still a big difference between a sixth grader and a 10th grader.
There is. There is. It's something that we.
That is my concern.
Yep, there is. There's something that we had talked about beforehand. But, but we also, we, we had the discussion in the, in the spring, I think I'd asked some of the questions, like we had very few issues on buses last year in particular, or even in, in previous years. And there's been very few incidents on buses. So again, we'll have to evaluate and see and there'll be a lot more students on the bus. So it's something we'll have to continue to look at.
Okay, thank you.
Jimmy House, just with the busing, it seems like with the phone holder, my daughter's in middle school. She says it's like 273 on that phone. So there's no interaction in this, the elementary bus.
Yeah, that, we, we had bus monitors last year. I was one of them for a couple of days and that's by experience. Every high school kid was just on their phone the whole time. But again, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to evaluate it. Something that was brought up when we talked about doing it, but just the, the cost of having the extra buses and many of the high school routes had so few students on them that it was just something we were gonna try and see.
I just, I'm gonna update this on the second item as well. We will be putting communication out following this meeting that's gonna talk about the parking plan, all those pieces as well as buses and reminding folks about that, you know, seating to the front, seating to the back and watch it very closely. But that is, that was one of the things we talked about a lot last spring was that concern. But I think, you know, students, again, not assigned seats, but sort of guided towards certain sections of the.
My, my biggest concern with the busing is just making sure that it pushes in so that when kids get on at the end, that they can find a seat. That's my concern. If every seat's taken and somebody's sitting at the end of the bus, the end of the seat rather than pushing in, but.
Are there monitors on every bus or is it a?
We, we did it last year, just in the very beginning, when we had to assign seat numbers to, to students. We had to, you know, make sure they were wearing masks, things like that. We just did that in the beginning of the year, just to make sure that people knew where to go and what seat they were in, et cetera.
So it's just the bus driver on the bus? Is there, I, I know in past years, and I don't, can't keep track of the company, there was video cameras. I know there was a big incident when one of my kids lives in elementary. Is there videos on the bus, all of that, in case something comes up? There is a way to go back and see what happened?
Yes. So there are actually four video cameras on the bus that show the front, the middle, the rear and then kind of the outside view and the front of the bus. There are also GPS equipment on, on the bus so we can monitor speed and what they, what time they were at each stop. So, and kind of all, and pull data to that exactly on a hangar.
Okay. Any other thoughts, comments, questions on the reopening?
Oh, sorry. Well, the buses have like, have we, a system set up to provide like masks to the bus drivers so that if kids get on the bus without them, that they're outside?
Yes, there will be, there'll be a stock of PPE on, in a sense, on the bus. There'll be hand sanitizing if the students wanna sanitize when they get, when they board and when they exit. And then there'll be a supply of masks.
That's all, I mean, it's a different bus company, but it's the same procedures we had in place last year and it was really non-issue. Kids all came on with masks. I, I would be willing to bet we didn't give out many, but we still will have, probably have the same boxes we had, right? And, but they are there available. They're actually brand new buses, believe me, aren't they?
Really?
Yeah, brand, everything.
I was mostly just asking because the plan changed, so just to make sure that we have that stuff still.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on. North Reading Middle School, High School Campus Plan Update.
Right. Just very quickly, so what'll be going out tomorrow will be the update. This will also be in the newspaper this week. I'll be sending this out to everyone and the high school principal and middle school principal will be sending this out as well. But we've worked very closely, really started middle, you know, late, late spring last year, working with the fire department, the police department. The town administrator was involved with some of the walkthroughs, having lots of conversations around, you know, addressing obviously some of the, what's going to be happening at the middle high school because we're all at the same time in one campus, but also addressing some issues that have been here for many, many years. And so there's going to be a video that'll be shared where Dr. O'Connell, Mr. LaPrent, Officer King, Officer Lucci kind of walk through some of the important pieces of the guidance. So part of what I'm really gonna be stressing in, in, in this is, you know, we, we need to give this plan some time. There's going to be just, whenever there's something new, if we think back to when this building opened, those first few days of school, there's always increased traffic anyway. And then when you introduce something new and it'll be procedure, there's always gonna be this. We need people to be patient and give us, to give us a chance. But there's two main aspects of this that we're kind of excited about. The first being an option for a quick drop off. So what you can see here is kind of hard to see, but essentially in the lower, at the lower lot, which is down by the football field, there will be a quick drop off. So cars will come in here at the bottom, turn right, come up and around. And there will be a drop off here. Students will get dropped off. They can cross here at the crosswalk, come up the hill. They'll be able to enter the building through the high school at the bottom of this building right here and at the loading dock area going into by the course and, and BAM area. So we'll have staff there on the inside as those students come in and they'll be able to get there. In addition, as sort of an extra support for students that might have like a really heavy backpack or a project or something, we're going to start the year with a shuttle bus. We're gonna evaluate, see how much gets used. We've offered that kind of a support when we've had like an all-district PD and brought staff in. So the idea would be that the shuttle bus would be able to pick students up here and also bring them up and then keep circling back down. So that's an additional piece. So this idea would be before and after school with some quick drops there and then people would be coming out and going right back onto, out of the campus there. So that is, that, that system, the other change for the main system...
And that, that would be after-school as well, you said?
This would be before and after, yes. There's some slight differences with after-school, where if people do arrive early, they may be able to just kind of be there waiting. And then be able to, like, these spots here at the top, around the corners, I believe are not going to be taken or assigned to students. So there's gonna be some staff in the student's parking here along the side and in the middle. And so these spots may be available for people if they want to get there early and late. But they would not be interrupting the flow of traffic, which has to continue for the, for the pickups and drops. I think that for most people, though, for drop-offs, I'm sorry, for, for pickups, it's gonna be in the main loop. So everyone will be coming in the main loop. The major difference this year, when you come up to the back, instead of coming right across here, it's gonna, we're gonna use the parade route. This is one of those things that came to our minds after, when I say the parade route, when we did the senior class of 2020 parade route, this is what they did. And so this same idea would just, you know, just extend this run here, around to the back, and coming up and down and around to the front. So that just gives a little bit more time for this to back up. What was happening last year, when we studied this, there was a lot of traffic. There were some people that were parking here, and there were some people that were slowing down here, which, which interrupted the traffic flow. The other thing that was happening is, when people were trying to cross here, and everyone was coming out of the parking lot, exiting here over by the gym entrance, there were a lot, there was a lot of confusion. And so, one of the things we've done, these are all one ways. So the exiting of the parking lot for staff and students that are parking, everyone's gonna be exited by the tennis courts. And so it's gonna be really important, if cars go around here from the front, that it's sort of a zipper, like, one, one and one. Right? So people coming out of the parking lot will go, and then people will come from here. But if we can do that well, without the congestion here of some of the cars that were parked and were, who were holding up traffic, that's not gonna happen. We feel that this is going to be much more efficient and keep things moving. So, you know, as I'm gonna say repeatedly, every, every school in America around pickup time takes 10 or 15 minutes. On our worst days last year, within 15 minutes, everything was cleared up. And there were some things that were not in place last year. For example, there's, you know, there was no quick drop, there was no, you know, alleviation in that way. There was also no, the timing of the lights was not synced with the school bells. That has all been adjusted this year. So the, the new start times have been programmed into the lights on the streets to make it more accommodating to our schedule, and knowing that those are heavy times of traffic at those lights. So it'll be more accommodative. So, this will be a one-way, turn in here. And everyone coming into the parking lot is going to be, going through the center crosswalk. So all the traffic from teachers and students, everyone that's coming, the walking traffic will be right here in the middle, which should allow it to be a little bit less congested as people are exiting. So we put a lot of time and effort into this. One of the things that we've done, that the principals have spent quite a bit of time on, is assigning parking spaces. So in the past, it was sort of a free-for-all for parking. We figured with everybody coming on campus at the same time, it was important for, for staff and students to know that they had an assigned space that's reserved for them. And so everyone is going to have an assigned parking space in that back lot. And we obviously didn't assign as many spaces because we kept some room open for the traffic flow. But we feel that this will help with, you know, student driving, having that traffic go up and around the back. That's not gonna interfere with where the students are coming and going and parking. They should be able to pull straight through and out into the traffic and come out to the left of the tennis courts. So we are, we're gonna be sharing, as I mentioned, we're gonna share this video out, and we will be out there. The other part that I did mention was, I think I may have mentioned it, but there's going to be a crossing guard position down here to allow for the students who are crossing the lower lot. So that, that will be a person that will be posted there. No questions? Yes?
Adriana.
I think I had asked this, like, for a couple of knowledge, if you go back to the campus up top.
Yep.
So that you deter people from exiting from the gym, you'll have, like, a deterrent? A barrier, so to speak, so that they can't come out and then take a left and go down? So there, there'll be a one-way from the gym entrance to the tennis entrance, correct?
Correct. During, during, this is only during the, the peak drop-off and pickup time. So during those times, there would be a barrier on this stretch right here, going, going that direction. There'll be, there's arrows, you can already see they're painted out there to turn right, and you'll direct it up around and event. So it's a little bit longer run, but we feel like that will queue. What, what would happen is, you know, as, when we thought about how far those pickup lines were queuing back, we figured out we can stretch that out a little bit and get it, you know, it's all on our property. It's not going back onto, onto the 62. So we feel like that will be, you know, much smoother. But all high school and middle school pickup is in that front loop, or they should be down at the central loop.
I think it was a double, probably gonna ask, but I'm gonna ask. Go ahead.
Sure.
Can I read out here? That, that bottom drop-off?
Yep.
Actually, I should say pickup. You're not thinking that that's gonna back up into the street for people waiting?
Down?
People up there?
Down here?
Yeah. Because I was thinking for the morning drop-off, I didn't realize it would be afternoon pickup. And I know how a lot of parents come and wait. And is there any fear that that's gonna back up all the way, because that's close to the street, right?
Yep.
And it's gonna back up traffic for people ever even trying to get up?
Sure. It's a little bit longer than you think, but I, I, I do understand. So part of what we're trying to figure out is what that balance is. What I'm gonna try to recommend, and what we're gonna be probably sending home as reminders, is if you get there and you're hoping to do the short, and you're backing up, like, if you see, like, there's cars backed up right here at this point, to pull around and do the full drop. Like, if, if you're getting there at that point, because I, I think that could happen if this becomes too popular choice. Let me put it this way, this model is gonna be most successful if we're balancing the two, the, the full loop and the short loop.
But, the, the problem with that, though, is, how do you know where to pick up your kid?
Yeah.
They're gonna go to different locations. If you, if, if you told them that you're gonna pick up with the short one, and you got there late, and now you're gonna be at the other one, you're not gonna be able to, your, your student might not know that you're at the other one. That's, that's my concern. I agree with it. I think, I, personally, I think I love the idea for the drop-off. I just wonder if you should start with just one pickup. I, I just worry that, I worry that the pickup in the lower area is gonna be harder, and that students got to walk all the way down there, as opposed to, if already everyone's being picked up up top, and just use it as a, as a pickup for the way, on the way down.
I think we, yeah. We thought through all these things. I think that we're gonna see how it goes. If that starts to happen, that could be a concern. But we think, what we're hoping is, the people that do want to use the lower one and do that as a pickup will, you know, alleviate some of the stress up top. Now, again, I think, I think having a balance of options is gonna be, if, if we're gonna watch this very closely, if we do see it backing up, or there being a problem, then we'll, then we'll have to readjust it. But we, we feel that just, you know, having both options for people at, you know, both times is gonna be the most successful. People are gonna have to figure out which they're more comfortable with, which one's working better for them, what they, you know. I think it's going to, you know, a lot, a lot of times, what we're seeing is there's, you know, texting or communications with kids about which location you're in. That's what's happening now. People were going up in the back lot, parking there, kids were walking out to the cars. So we're trying to discourage that behavior. But we think it's important to give another option to avoid that behavior. Because if people are trying to go up and park in the back and have kids crossing, like, we, we really want the front pickup to be at the front loop. Because when people were not doing that, that was slowing down everything. So we figured, people are still gonna do that, people are gonna want to park somewhere and have kids walk to them. So we're trying to give them a place to do things. So, we think that this will, will work out. But certainly, the, you know, if things didn't go well, we could see some of those things happen, but we're gonna watch that very closely.
And I think, and that's, that's why we, I like the plan overall. I think a lot of work has gone into it. I like a lot of the adjustments. That's my big concern. Even, even if it was just, it was only a high school pickup or something, where, you know, the high school kids can come down there, but maybe six of them and eight can't, something like that, but...
And those are the kind of adjustments we might, we might have to make. But right now, we feel like, we're gonna see. I think there's different opinions about whether there's popularity. You know, we might, we might get a sense of that, get, get a sense from folks after a few days. There's some, some feel that the lower lot is gonna be very popular, some feel it's not gonna be used at all. So, we have, we have to see how that, how that kind of goes.
I think it depends on whether the parent or the kid gets to decide.
Yeah.
Parent gets to decide, it's good. The kid's gonna be walking down. But the other thing I would just worry about also is just, you know, that is a detail. I don't know how well we keep it, the ice in the middle of the winter, but that'll be something very important to think about, because when snow starts on that, you might have to make adjustments. There might be some days that it's too slippery to even allow people to pick up down there, too. That'd be the other thing I'd be worried about with weather, and then if, you know, for, even, even for, for drop-off, too, where if that's too slippery to...
And we do have that. I feel like those might be some of the days when the shuttle might be more, more used. And also, I, I wouldn't say with the tool cat, that's gonna be clouded. And it's always, we have people that walk up there on even our worst days. But I, but I agree, it might be less popular, you know, in the rain, it's gonna be a less popular option. So I think, again, having the balance. Right now, there's really one answer for everyone. It's dropping off in one place. We wanted to give people a second option.
Mr. McGowan? Rich? Here did I get? Your audio's not working. Anybody other than Mr. McGowan? Um, question?
You still on?
You're still on.
I know what the real risk is. One thing to annoy parents waiting in line, it's another to annoy people trying to get to work down the main street, right? Because that's a bigger issue.
And it's, it's nice we have such a big campus. That's a really nice thing. And, and I said this in the spring, I mean, there's a lot of schools around here that are a lot bigger than us. Even high school drop-off is as big at some schools as, as the combined middle and high school is gonna be at North Running. You know, and, and there's a lot of schools that have a lot less distance, or a lot less campus to use as well. So, I, I know it's been nicer for people to be able to get in in 12 minutes, but...
So, you know, I've been, I've been asked, are we gonna reassess, and we certainly will. But, again, people need to be patient, give it a few weeks. Those first few days, people are getting used to it, and going where they're going and learning the routes. But we have to see how it goes, see how it flows, and we, you know, our team will continue to readjust. But this was, you know, we, we spent a lot of time on this, and like I said, the fire department, the police department, we felt that this not only was efficient, but also allowed, you know, for access if needed with, with safety vehicles and such. By keeping it, you know, by getting as many cars as we can onto our own property and doing the loops, we thought that that was the most efficient.
Okay. Mr. McGowan, are you there? Do you need, do you wanna talk? All right. Issues? Yeah, moving on. Okay. The exciting stuff. The budget calendar for this year. I assume, Mr. Connolly, you're handling this?
I am, yeah. So, I know my team is off early to be discussing FY23 budget, but I don't think there was too many surprises with the FY23 budget calendar. I think the, the calendar that we have used in the past has generally worked out well. It follows very consistent with the town budget calendar, its process with the planning team. So, we would look to start out improving large capital improvement plans for the month of October with the presentation and vote on our FY23 large capital request. We then kick off our internal budget process around mid-October with principals and directors. And then, I, I would also provide any updates, I think, in early November about COVID-19 federal funding in terms of the SR funding and anything to do with COVID funding. And I thought that would be a good time to provide an update. As I know, the, the SR3 grant application is due shortly before the November 8th date. And then, due to five and 10-year enrollment projections toward the end of November, we certainly would have our October 1, September 10 data reconciled certified by then. So it'd be a good time to discuss enrollment projections prior to release of the budget. Budget requests typically coming to me right around Thanksgiving or shortly after Thanksgiving. Within, I would make a best effort and should be able to, to release a preliminary budget request just before the February break. That's what we've been doing in the past. Gives the school committee plenty of time to kind of vet and review the data. It gives you about two, almost two or three weeks to do that prior to public presentation, which would occur on 7th. You can make notes in the detailed budget book as we approach the presentation on 7th. We would do a webinar for the community on March 25th. We would hold our annual public hearing on the 11th. We'd have two budget workshops, one scheduled before the hearing and one scheduled before the vote, to make any edits or suggestions in response to public feedback. We would vote the budget on May 2nd, present to the planning committee on May 4th. And that would provide us to be able to release the budget plenty of time for this election, with all the time meeting warrants. And then, not 100% sure of this date, but the time meeting would be on or about around June 13th. And the time would go with the budget. Any questions on that?
Mrs. Embriano has some, some corrections, and she wants me to be the one to point out, but I'll let her point them out.
Did I put any FY22 on there, or...
No, you have October 18, 2021, then October 15, 2022. So I was just, yeah.
I thought I caught this.
We covered it.
So, yeah. So...
The dates of 2021, 20...
2021. Again, that's a, that's a kind of soft internal date between myself and Dr. Daley and the directors.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Mr. McGowan says he can hear us. We can say anything we'd like about him, and he can respond. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Connolly. You're still up for Budget Gold?
I am. So, I had certainly spoken to Dr. Daley, I know he had a couple of goal sessions to be such consistent with conversations with school committee goals, as well as NFPS 2025. We've sort of drafted the following six budget goals for fiscal year 2023. Sticking to the theme to really maybe shorten this list somewhat from what's been in the past, really focus our efforts on key initiatives. Certainly, we want to approve a fiscal year 2023 budget that's consistent with student achievement in alignment with NFPS 2025, which we are working on in the district. As, as Dr. Daley will be presenting more detailed information to the committee on in terms of the initiatives with the NFPS 2025. Certainly, the, the theme and the objective of just reducing operational costs and looking at ways to be more energy efficient. I know we've kind of achieved LED lighting. We pursued solar. We had a presentation from RMLD. I know Chairman Buckley has reached out to our state representative. And it's something that we want to pursue, we're just looking for the right fit and the right time. So that's something that we want to continue to pursue, as well as other operational efficiencies. There's boiler upgrade that can, any energy management modulation efficiencies that can be achieved. And I also think through Sunny Campagnan, the new director of facilities, who actually has a pretty thorough wastewater treatment plant background. She's been really spending a lot, a lot of time with the wastewater treatment plant operator to see what, what sort of efficiencies could be gained there. And I think all, these are all areas we can look at and then, um, through the budget process. We've talked about, and I know it's reflected in the goal, and it's reflected in NFPS 2025, an objective to work towards universal free full day requirement. We discussed during the fiscal year 22, a phased-in approach, but I think we will continue to focus here, look at a reduction of the tuition fees, look at alternative state funding options through Student Opportunities Act or any other funding that may be available. Would certainly be an objective. This is a longstanding goal. Just, we know it's challenging, certainly, but it, it's explore options for reductions of fees. A goal last year, but I, you know, I think it's getting a little easier that, in a sense, from a manager's perspective, it's a little bit of less funding there, like, there's still COVID-19 funding available through SR2 and SR3 and FEMA and CARES Act funding. So we want to maximize these areas and continue to have those conversations as we move through. And also, as we assess some of the new positions through SR1, how they work out, does it make sense to continue with those, those positions added through, through the SR1 and SR2 program? And then, as we always do, we'll collaborate with our representatives, with the select board, finance committee, town administrator, Michael Libero, town finance director, Elizabeth Ward there, that I'm going to, to work with through this process, and we'll want to continue to do that through the finance planning team. I think that'll open up to any, any questions or comments.
Now, Rich is trying to follow. Can I? I have no questions. Um, anybody? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Connolly.
Mr. Buckley, can you hear me now?
Mr. Buckley, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Mr. McGowan.
I apologize for all that difficulty. I don't have anything I need to say, but I just want to let you know I am now, uh, on and able to hear you and talk, so.
I'm not going to say I'm excited, but that's, I guess it's good. Okay. Move on to the minutes here. Mrs. Embriano, do you want to lead us in the minute?
Sure. All right. I'd like to make a motion to accept the executive session of August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one at breakfast.
Any discussion, anything off?
Not that I thought.
Okay to me? Guess we'll do a roll call vote since some are not here in person. Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, pass to five zero.
I would like to make a motion to accept the regular meeting, um, open session of August sixteenth at breakfast.
Again, any discussion, changes?
Not that I thought.
Okay. The roll call vote, Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, pass to five zero. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Connolly, no budget update right now?
Uh, nope. Everything's going well with fiscal twenty-two. I had a first budget update by the September twenty-fifth meeting.
Good. Anything update, Mr. Dr. Daly?
Not this time. We still, I heard there's some last-minute additions and positions to be filled, but nothing we need to.
Okay. It's in donations. Mr. McGowan, would you like to lead us in then?
Sure thing. I move the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of five hundred and fifty-five dollars from the E Ethel Little Elementary School PTO to help defray the cost of buses for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two field trips.
Second?
Okay, any discussion on this? Roll call vote, Rich?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, pass to five zero. That was all we had, right? Okay.
Yes.
Subcommittee update, um, we have one from the athletics subcommittee.
Um, yes, we missed, or what did you get today? But there were three subjects that I can remember, one was the eighth grade waiver. I believe it was in lacrosse, that they were looking more specifically.
I was still talking.
Still talking, sorry. To have the eighth grade waiver, it's not a par block across all of them, it's kind of like a, we would see there is going to be some standards and guidelines as to, uh, what would facilitator have the necessary need to have an eighth grade waiver?
Do you want to clarify a little bit like what the waiver's for to allow eighth graders to participate in varsity?
Exactly. And it would be JV, but not necessarily kicking a senior out because there was an up-and-coming eighth grader that was better. So it would be, um, if, if there wasn't enough people, like you can play basketball with five, but you need more than five people, you know, to actually make a team because not necessarily five people can play the entire game. But it is right now focused more on the field hockey. For instance, uh, wrestling used to be really low and that was really high. And even though we are in cooperation with the field, um, now the numbers are dropping again. So in the future, that might be something that could be looked upon, but.
That's, that's, you know, maybe just, yeah, so the, we set criteria really for, for sports, for what this was, not just, um, it needs to be based on several different prongs, we'll say, like participation numbers over several years that we would look at, coach recommendation, um, and a variety of other factors. So Mr. Johnson's sort of setting that up. The only one that met that criteria right now is the field hockey program. And the recommendation would be for sub-varsity programs, um, but, you know, we just want to make it clear that it's not, oh, I heard eighth graders can play sports now. It's really on a need basis and we want to make that very clear. And because we want to make sure that, you know, the high school students that are eligible to play are able to play. So then, we don't see that being an issue at all. And we had a lot of support from this, from the feeder, um, you build hockey programs as well, is this really be a need to build those programs?
And, and, and the field hockey was specifically because there's not, there's a concern that might not be enough, the field inadequate size.
Sure. Yep.
I think there was a mention of a couple of other towns that do it now and.
There are several, we're one of the few that don't have it.
Um, another topic that we discussed was the light because the SFC got passed to pay for putting, um, a portion of the light on the, the sports field. And I for the life of me cannot remember the third ticket stuff.
Those were the, those were the two names?
You're just wrong about how many there were.
Maybe, yeah, I think there were three, I just wasn't.
I think we talked about the timeline of the light bid, the lighting bid, so it is due on September fifteenth. And the hope is that if everything goes well, that project could potentially be completed prior to the, the winter break. But it's not going to be happening all of the spring. I think the third thing we discussed was COVID regulations, spectators and that.
There you go.
Covered that tonight.
Yeah. See, I knew it was really.
Okay.
Keep us in check, right?
Administrator report, Dr. Daly?
Sure. I just, uh, at this time, I don't have anything to share. I just wanted to go back to this question too. I'm pretty sure the video will explain this even better, but I, I was thinking about the question you had. I think for the pickup, it's more about the spaces. I think what it says is if you get in those spaces, you might be able to wait there. But for the, for the queuing up of the lines, like what we've seen in typical after-school training, that really needs to be done up at the top. That, that's, I think that was more your thing, right? It was about the, the pickup piece. So I may have, I may have misspoke, but I think the video makes it a lot.
So the pickup will be up top?
The pickup is really up top. There, I believe that in the video they described, there are a few spaces designated and if you're in one of those spaces, but you shouldn't be, I don't believe we're going to suggest that people are queuing up here for, for an after-school pickup. The queuing up would be to the longer extension of, of, of. So, yeah, I, yeah, I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear. It's, it's, um, it's much more clear in the video. And as I mentioned, we still, there will be some things we might learn quickly, hey, we need to do something different or this isn't working. But we are going to give it a few weeks to, to watch that develop.
Okay. Other administrative report update?
Uh, none.
So the, is every student school committee being invited on September second or not? Do you want school committee members there or, or not for the orientation?
Sure, everyone, um.
But I'm not, if, if it's more of a closing, a client group.
Yeah, I know, it's been, it's more of a closing, everyone's always there. But you're certainly welcome. Mr. Buckley is ready to speak as, as the chair has done in the past. I know that in the past, many members have come and participated and you're, you're certainly welcome too. We're, we're going to be in person, we're going to be, uh, our number is dictating that we can spread out to the extent that is, well, we are going to stay in person. I think that's the message of this year, it's a fully in-person year, we're going to be fully in-person for that morning message. So if you would like to attend, certainly just let me know, we'd love to have people there. I know that it's not always feasible with people's work because eight, eight, uh, eight-thirty to about nine-thirty is really the time.
Thank you. Love you. Thank you.
Saying thank you. Okay. Correspondence? I think other than emails that we've all been getting, think there's any correspondence, is there, Dr. Daly?
There's not. I think just in general, as you said, we've heard from a lot of folks on, on many different sides of many different issues. I think we've certainly listened to everyone and incorporated feedback, you know, into, into our changes and adaptations of our plan. We certainly appreciate that. I think it was, you know, the, the conversations are happening in North Reading, they're happening in every state, they're happening all over the world, right? And I think we're, um, I certainly have said several times that I've heard from many people, um, it's on different sides of the issues, and I think it's so important to hear those thoughts and try to, you know, we're, everyone's trying to do what's best for their children and for the community. And I think we can learn a lot by listening and I think that was successful.